If any members of the public want to give public comment, I would just ask use the little hand raise. Tool and I will keep an eye once we get to the public comment portion of the meeting. And I'll make that announcement again then. Perfect. I'm just going to keep my camera off for right now because. I'm just trying to make sure my audio is working. So first thing I will announce is that the this. Meeting is being recorded. It started automatically when we all signed on. So this. This is a recorded meeting and it will end up on the township's website after the fact.
Okay. And good evening. My name is attorney Mike Karate. I'm special counsel for the township. And this is the most exciting part of the solicitors or special all year. We wait for this because we're in charge of the meeting for just a little bit. So. First thing I would do would be a call the meeting to order and we'll all rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. Okay, now we'll do a roll call. I'll just go based on my camera here. John Callahan. Here. Danielle.
Present.
Martha.
Here.
Bob.
Present.
Mark.
Here.
Paul Bettinger. Lori.
Present.
And Valentina.
Present.
I think I got everybody. Did I miss anybody? No, I think that's everybody. The the first order of business, because obviously we're virtual tonight instead of being in person. And that's because of the snow event today. So the first order of business would be to. Accept a motion to declare a state of snow emergency on the part of the township.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second the motion for Martha. Thanks.
So there's been a motion made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Expect none. Next, the. So I can turn the meeting over to someone who can really run it. Accepting nominations for the position of chair of the board of supervisors for 2025.
I'd like to nominate Mark Donovan as our chair for the board of supervisors.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everybody. And I guess I take over now. Thanks, Mike. I'll make a motion to appoint John Callahan as our vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Oh.
I'll let Lori figure out who was a second.
Poor Valentina is gonna have to figure it out later.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. We are right on to the main order of business, appointing our treasurer. I'll make a motion to appoint Lori Gatz as the treasurer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Too slow.
I gotta get faster at the unmute button.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion that the bond be set at $2 million, cost paid by the township for our treasurer. On second, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to appoint Martha Majeski, our assistant treasurer. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. We set that bond for the assistant treasurer at $2 million, cost paid by the township. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to appoint township manager Lori Gatz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are you ready for this, Lori?
Are you sure you want it, Lori? Are you sure?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, you're having it anyway. I'll make a motion that we make that we appoint our township manager as Valentina Mitterer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Same goes for Valentina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Make a motion to appoint Valentina, our secretary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to appoint Lori Gatz, our assistant township secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right. Our agenda does say public comment here.
If any members of the public would like to make comments, just please raise your hand. I don't see any. I see no hands raised.
Yeah, and I'm gonna echo that. For any of these motions going forward, please raise your hands and we'll 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 pause while we. Answer questions or anything. This is gonna go pretty fast, I hope. I'm gonna make a block motion after this, but. This is gonna be a motion to approve and accept appointments numbers 13 through 29, and I'm going to read them out. For administration liaison Danielle Joen, fire company liaison Mark Donovan, Bob Cooney, police department liaisons. Mark Donovan, Bob Cooney, pension committee liaison Bob Cooney, planning commission liaison Mark Donovan. Historical commission liaison Martha Majeski. Environmental advisory council liaison John Callahan, open space commission liaison Bobby. Phoenix Villarreal School District liaison Martha Majeski, regional planning delegate Danielle Juen and Andrew Jacob. Alternate delegate Martha Majeski. Regional trail committee liaison John Callahan, tax collection liaison Martha Majeski, emergency declaration officer, primary. Lori Gatz and alternate Majeski, emergency management coordinator Raphael Henin. Deputy EM coordinator Ashley Ben-Gough. Vacancy board chair Sandra Henze and recycling coordinator Ryan Huff of Huff Associates and. I'm gonna amend that motion. Because I think I said 29, but there's actually numbers through 30. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Everybody cool. Any questions?
Yeah, Mark, you went quiet just for a second. I think on the open space commission, your your mic went down. That's still.
Bob Cooney. Yes, you.
Making sure he went blank there for a second.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, any any others that kind of like flipped while I was going through?
I think I heard the rest.
Great.
I only see 29, but we can. That's.
Oh, maybe it maybe it is through 29. My numbering got. Funny then. Ignore the amendment then. Motion's been made, second's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's because I made a check. That's why. It like added a number. Great. So this is gonna be appointments committees and commissions via block vote again. Can I make a motion here to just say as written in the agenda?
Okay, thank you, Lori. I wanted you to scroll down. I couldn't read it. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Yep.
Yeah, do I need to make individually or can I make this a motion to appoint? Appoint the recommended appointments as noted in the agenda for each of these.
I was told in the past that we had to name them publicly.
Thank you. Okay, that's. Yep, I will go ahead and do that. I can never remember if we have to.
I wanted to do the same thing, Mark, and I was hoping we had to name them publicly.
We'll run it. We will run through it. I'll make a motion that we appoint April Gowdy to a. Alternate term expiring December 31st, 2027. Do I have a second? To the planning commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we. Reappoint Sean Dempsey and Kevin Hyde. Sean Dempsey is a full member and Kevin Hyde is an alternate to the zoning hearing board. With three-year terms expiring 12/31/27. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we appoint. Let's see.
Lori, can you scroll down some more?
I'm trying to write and scroll at the same time.
I'm on my own screen, so you don't have to scroll for me, but. Yeah, no, I'm on my own. So. All right, I'll make a recommendation. I'll make a motion that we recommend appointment or that we appoint Michelle Guard. Karen Hilliard, Anne Lincoln and April Gowdy to full member terms of. Expiring 12/31/27. Do I have a second for the environmental advisory council?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we. We don't have anybody for recommended for appointment to the historical commission, so I'll move to the next. If we have anybody who would like to join our historical commission who's not already on a commission or board for our township, please submit your applications to our township manager and assistant manager. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Tim McAvoy to a term expire, a three-year term expiring 12/31/20. Seven, I think, because it says 26, but a three-year term would end in 27, wouldn't it? I think that's a typo.
Yes, I think that is a typo, but we'll verify, but I believe that is a typo.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna assume it's 27, but a three-year term whenever it ends and for the open space commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're on to appointment and recognition of administrative positions. This would be an approval of 2025 administrative appointments at such time as amended by the board of supervisors. For this one, it's gonna be a block motion. We're. Making a motion here to approve and accept 2025 administrative appointments. Chief of Police William Fitzsimmons, open records officer Valentina Mitterer. Alternate open records officer Lori Gatz, open records officer, police department chief William Fitzsimmons. Alternate open records officer for the police department Lieutenant Brian McCarthy, VFASA joint board member Lori Gatz, tax hearing officer Lori Gatz. Township roadmaster Nicholas Sutensirapino, township engineer T and M associates Paul Bettinger PE. Township traffic engineer Bowman, township solicitor Sienna Law, Michael G. Crotty Esquire, Butera. And township special counsel Butera Bothang Cohen and Brennan, William J. Brennan Esquire. Township open space council Whistler Pearlstein LLP, Robert CF Wilson Esquire. Township land planner Natural Lands, zoning hearing board solicitor NUCC appeals board solicitor Gothor Greenward PC, Patrick McKenna Esquire. Zoning officer and building code official Kimberly Yocumvalio. Building inspector, code enforcement officer, alternate ZO and BCO Arrow Consulting Inc. Fire marshal Evan Taylor, deputy fire marshal Joel Zimmerman. Fire police captain Maria Wickham. Do I have a second for all of those appointments?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And section that we all love, other motions. I'll make. I'll make a motion to advertise the dates of the 2025 board of supervisors meetings as well as board of supervisors work sessions, environmental advisory council, historic commission, open space commission, planning commission, Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee and zoning hearing board meetings as presented on the 2025 calendar. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to require that all expenditures in excess of $5,000 must receive prior approval of the board of supervisors. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This has been in place for a little while. It's a. Maximum expenditures before we have to bring items before Lori has to bring items to the board. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to set the township mileage reimbursement for 2025 at 70 cents per mile per the IRS 2025 business mileage rate of 70 cents per mile. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to appoint voting delegate. And alternate voting delegate to Piceats Conference, May 4th through 7th, 2025. Oh. First, who would like to do that?
Not me.
Not Martha. That's that's every year. It's written down in stone, Martha.
Not my thing. Thank you.
The last two years the board has made, I've been the voting delegate and then a board.
You just you just went out, Lori.
A member has been.
Which board member would like to be the alternate alternate voting delegate? Because Lori will probably be nominated as the voting delegate for us, and she will absolutely be there.
I think John really wants to do it.
John, you're gonna get called out. I mean, I've planned on going, so.
All right, great. Well, then I'm gonna make a motion to appoint John as the alternate voting delegate and Lori as the voting delegate for the Piceats Conference, May 4th through 7th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Congratulations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, John.
No, you're.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Not painful at all.
Those conferences are just not my thing, and I appreciate you guys every year going to that, so I don't have to.
So now we're gonna have. Now we're gonna have further discussion on it because Martha loves it so much, and it's who else would like to attend?
Not me.
I I I do. I would like to attend. I know Lori could. I typically attend the solicitors forum. I would like to attend, but I will. I think you just need to know the maximum number of people that are going to attend. Like if we review our calendars and determine that we cannot attend, that that would be fine.
Yes, absolutely.
And do we need to include our? Do we need to include the staff who are going in the motion?
Yes.
How many staff are going?
Three.
Including you, Lori?
Yes, myself and Valentina go, and Kim attends the zoning seminar that's on Sunday.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion authorizing up to seven, seven individuals from our township to attend the 2025 Piceats Conference with overnight accommodations if. If requested. That should cover everyone but Martha and all of the staff who would like to go. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Does that catch us all, Lori?
Yeah.
Fantastic. All any other discussion from anybody? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the list of activities at the Valley Forge Fire Company and Fire Police for 2025 for insurance purposes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-01 depositories and Signatories. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-02 appointment of a CPA. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
No. Lori, can you scroll down?
Yes.
Thank you.
Not seeing no no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-03 2025 township fee schedule. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-04 emergency services provision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-05 affirmation of code of conduct for supervisors of school townships. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Everybody behave. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-06 establishing procedures and rules for compliance with the Pennsylvania Right to Know law. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-07 record destruction. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-08 zoning hearing board appointments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No new business. Any public comment? Raise your hand real quick. Give a couple of seconds and. Closing public comment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the reorg meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Thank you, everybody. Now we're gonna move on to our business agenda. Let me just reorganize my screen.
If you need to take a breather, Mark, go right ahead. That was a lot to say.
Oh, no, no, we're gonna keep up. That's. As long as you guys are cool, it's gonna. I'll make a note that the. Well, Lori, do we need to open the meeting or can we just announce the public hearing will be told? To a date to be readvertised.
I think that that's. Why don't you call the meeting to order first?
That's what I was wondering. I'll call the meeting to order. This is our business meeting for January 6th, 2025. Thank you for attending. We're gonna table the public hearing for the conditional use application CU 2024-01 for the Phoenixville Area School District to a date to be advertised. I believe it'll be our workshop agenda for the end of the month at the 4th Thursday. The last day of 4th Thursday? Fourth.
It's the fourth. Yep.
Fourth, yeah, 4th Thursday. Great.
January 23rd.
Yep, yep. We can go through the pledge of allegiance again, I suppose.
I I think it stuck the first time.
I think I think it stuck. Yeah. Okay, great. Everybody's still here. Beth, Bob, Martha, Danielle, John and our staff. Thank you, everybody, for not leaving.
Even Martha, who doesn't like people and is antisocial.
Yeah, I just don't do comments, too.
You're just gonna embrace it.
Ah, is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, for a couple of days of madness. So.
Trust you to embrace everyone for me.
Yeah, sure. Not too closely, though. I'm gonna announce executive session. Then we had an executive session right before this meeting on January 6th, personnel, land acquisition and legal matters. We have no presentations, so we're right on to the regular business meeting consent agenda. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the board of supervisors, December 11th, 2024, regular business meeting, including all departmental, committee, commission and council reports as posted and received by the board for the month of December 31st, 2020. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Lori, can you scroll down again?
Yeah.
Getting ahead.
And more.
So.
We we are going to. The first two items here are tabled.
Great. That's what I was just gonna ask you. Which ones of those are we tabling? So we're tabling the first two items, consideration of acceptance of the treasury report for December and the probable dispersments. We'll move those to our workshop, I suppose.
And the reason and the reason that those are being tabled is because of the snow emergency today. The admin office was closed.
Right, and couldn't compile all of the things. So we'll we'll talk about those again later this month. And we are going to. I'll make a motion to ratify dispersment. Dispersments dated December 12th, 2024 and December 19th, 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. These are a couple of checks that didn't get put in time for our last meeting, so we're ratifying those dispersments made after that. And any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No subdivisions, no land development, no old business. So right on to new business. I'll make a motion to approve memorandum of understanding terms of employment for chief of police William Fitzsimmons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to consider. I'll make a motion to approve a agreement with Cody Computer Services for the period of 1/1/2025 to 12/31/2025 in the amount of $7,040.06. This is a budget item. Cody's software we use for our police department. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
I just I just love how it has to have that 6 cents in there.
Yeah.
They couldn't make it around number.
No, of course not.
Yeah. Alrighty, all in favor for that one?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve an annual subscription renewal with Power DMS for the period of 2/19/25 to 2/18/26 in the amount of $6,108.74. This is also a budget item. Power DMS is policy and training software used by the police department. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve annual video production services contract with Applied Video Technology Creative Services in the amount of $5,990.06. This is another budget item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the annual traffic signal maintenance contract with Signal Service in the amount of $3,825.06. This is another budget item. I'll make. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you.
Lori, can you scroll down again?
Getting ahead. Sorry about that.
I'm rusty on these Zoom meetings.
Sorry.
Yeah, it just keeps rolling. Yeah. We had a motion a second, and this is for the traffic signal maintenance contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize our township manager to approve proposal from Indian Valley Appraisal Company for ONA Open Space Appraisal and Parcel R in the amount of $4,200.06. This appraisal is to be paid out of open space funds. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to ratify approval of a property maintenance agreement contract with Signature Services dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Lori, this is for property maintenance on the parcel near the reservoir.
Correct. It's for property management services in the interim while we have tenants remaining on the property.
Thank you for clarifying. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize township manager to close the A R P checking account with Phoenixville Federal Bank and Trust. This is an account that's no longer needed as we've exhausted our A R P funds. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve a proposal from McGrath Consulting for Human Resources Consultant Services as on an as-needed basis billed at an hourly rate of to be filled in the gap for
One fifty.
One hundred and fifty dollars. Great. Thank you. This is a budgeted item for twenty twenty-five and will include a full review and update of the town's twenty eleven employee handbook, review and update of all non-uniform job descriptions, non-uniform policies and procedures, and performance evaluation program for all non-uniform township staff. I've made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Any discussion on this one? This is exciting. It's way out of date. I'm looking forward to having the policy manual updated. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to authorize township manager as pension plan administrator to approve invoices for consulting services for the calendar year twenty twenty-five for T J Anderson and Associates for the Police and Non-Uniform Pension Plans in the amount of forty or five thousand four hundred dollars per plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that concludes that section. On to resolutions and ordinances.
Lori, can you scroll down?
I am really falling asleep on the job here, aren't I?
We're in the home stretch, Lori.
Busy trying to write everything down.
I know. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine to approve an application to the Chester County Preservation Partnership Program. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All righty, thank you. Any discussion on this one?
I will just point out, this is a resolution allowing us to apply for grant funding retroactively towards the acquisition of the open space property that the township just recently purchased at the Reeves tract.
Great, thanks. Motion's been made, second's been made. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great, thank you for your patience through all of the motions tonight. This won't happen again until next month. Two-minute reports. Our board liaisons, John.
Nothing to report. E A C did not meet in December.
Great. Danielle?
Nothing to report.
Bob?
Nothing to report.
Martha?
Nothing to report.
All right, and same for me. Great. Nice and quick. We'll go right to Lori. What do you have for us?
Just one, just one quick thing, and I may end up punting this over to Mike. But we did receive a notice of discontinuance on the P R D two Commonwealth Court matter. So we just just recently received that, and that is, of course, related to the restruct. So that's great news for twenty twenty-five.
Yes, that's good. All right, anything else? Okay, Paul?
Yes, not a very exciting month in December. Just let the board know that probably in the first week, week and a half in February, we should get the sidewalk review plan or excuse me, review letter from Penn dot back. That's about it.
Cool, thank you. Do we have chief somewhere or any representative from the police department?
We do have chief. I just he should be showing up on the screen momentarily. There you are.
He just popped on, yeah.
Perfect. I just promoted.
There, Bill.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as two-minute report, we will be having the corporals exam on the ninth. And we should have a result to you for approval sometime in the following week. I'll send it via Lori. Other than that, the code drive is still going strong, and I think that's it.
Good to hear.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Nice and sweet. Let's go on to additional business for discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshops. Do we have anything specific coming up that we should keep our keep our ears out for?
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Lori.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I've been asked to entertain a presentation by the director of the Phoenixville Area Soccer Club on the benefits of the programs that they run and also some of the constraints that they're dealing with in terms of space for their activities and in particular playing fields and and how that impacts their their ability to serve the community. Lori and I had spoken, maybe February might be a good opportunity for that to take place. Lori, does that still look open enough, free enough, the agenda for February?
Yeah, I think February workshop could be could be a good one. I think we were tentatively looking at maybe March for a sidewalk meeting, so February I don't have anything at this point that's locked in, so I think that that could be good, and we could preliminarily start our discussions about where we want to go with feasibility studies for the Reeves tract and all of that in February as well.
Okay, is I mean, am I or by doing that, are we pushing the the sidewalk discussion to March, or do you feel like that's the appropriate time to have the discussion on sidewalks because of the work that needs to be done before that discussion?
Yeah, I think February would be premature for the sidewalk because we are resubmitting to Penn out. We're we're trying to get as much done as we can before we talk about it publicly.
Okay, any other items for the agendas?
No, I think.
Sounds like we have plenty for the next couple of months, yeah.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And those are all big topics, so, yeah.
Yeah. All right, I don't have any announcements in front of me unless Lori's got some hiding.
Nope, no announcements.
Great. Public comment. Anyone here who has not spoken up tonight and wants to, feel free.
Please raise your use the raise your hand tool if you'd like to speak. We do have the fire department on. I don't know if they'd like to.
Oh, good. Yeah, then I would I would like to invite the fire department on if they if they want to.
I'm gonna take the liberty of unmuting Evan.
That's never a good idea.
Well, you're I nearly turned your camera on, so you're welcome for not just doing that.
Okay, yeah, no, well, I I work for a corporation that yells at you if your camera's on, so mine is never on.
Oh.
Yeah, no, I'm blessed that way. The the no, we have nothing significant. Happy New Year. I hope everybody's holidays went well.
Happy New Year.
Another productive year and getting into it, yeah.
Great. Thanks.
I do not see anybody with their hand raised.
All right, then. We'll give it another couple of seconds and then I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
New records.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, everybody, and I suppose you can go ahead with the recording.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night. Have a nice night.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thanks, bunch. Have a good one.